Mayor, I'd like to call to order the work session meeting of the Elmwood Park Mayor and Council for Thursday, June 10th, 2021, to order at 7:03 PM. On roll call, council members, Ballastary?
Here.
Ficory?
Here.
Fasolo, absent. Golebeck?
Here.
Pellegrine?
Here.
Council President Wetchler?
Here.
Mayor Colletti?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you, Erin. We apologize for being a few minutes late. It was beyond our control. So, we've got a lot to do. Let's get started. We ask Chapter 231 of the Public Laws of the State of New Jersey, require at the commencement of every meeting, a statement of compliance be read by the presiding officer. Now, therefore be advised, that the meeting requirements for this meeting have been met by publishing an annual notice in the Record in Herald News of Woodland Park, and by posting such notice in the office of the barrel clerk, as well as in a public place within a municipal building, and also by notifying interested citizens. Notice was posted on January 8th, 2021, and published on January 13th, 2021. Would anyone from the public like to be heard? Now's the time. If not, I'll close the public portion. Erin?
Mayor.
Oh, okay. Yes, please.
Good evening. My name is Scotty. As you know, I do the unsanely east, uh, fifty-four streets. And I had several issues that I wanted to raise to see all the paperwork here, but hang in there. The first is that I had reported to...
Excuse me, sir. Could you get into the mic a little, because nobody in the back of the room can hear you?
I had reported to our administrator about the breaking fence on Manhattan. I've probably been reported before. I reported it twice so far. I haven't seen a response. I want you to think that every time there's a problem, I can reach out and come behind the people myself, like my back in the deal with the city.
Mr. Scotty, on that's... That's under the control of the DOT. It was reported to them?
Scotty?
You didn't respond to me, so I had no way of knowing.
I know, Mr. Scotty. So, I'm sorry about that.
That's okay.
I respond to you very, very often.
You do. I just didn't know, or else I would have tried to follow up myself. I want to give you an example of something that I did that I never even mentioned to you. After Hurricane Issaiah's, fifty lights were off on the parkway as you... They're not actually in town, so I didn't bring it to the town to issue here. But getting off at that exit, that we get off at Saddle Brook there, fifty overhead lights were out after the hurricane. It took six months to get them back on. I spoke to the engineer on the parkway. I spoke to his supervisor, numerous emails, and you wouldn't believe that it would take that much, but we stayed with it, and it's all lit now. It's really dark, and it's a bad place not to have light. So, I don't want you to think that every time there's a problem, I send you an email. I do what I can myself. I just figured you had contact with the state because of the... That fence had been an issue. So, that should be charged to the person who broke the fence when the vehicle came down from I-80. That's what they do.
Right. That's up to the courts.
That's what they do. Yeah, no, I'm just saying, that's what they do. So, we want to make sure that, you know, they fixed the guardrail. Now, they need to fix the fence, you know? So, that's one issue. The other issue is that I... These are the numbers for COVID. This is what I get right off the... Either the freeholders, rather, the county executives' Facebook page. And if you need me to send you the source, please feel free to ask, or I'll send it to you. Just let me know. As of now, for the entire pandemic, thirteen percent of all Elmwood Park residents were infected by COVID. Elmwood Park, along with Garfield, Lodi, Lynnhurst, Monaki, North Arlington, and Westwood, had the third highest rate of infection for the seventy communities in Bergen County. And as you know, Bergen was at the center of the New Jersey outbreak and led the state through most of the pandemic, having the highest rate of infection in the state. New Jersey ranked 12th highest of the fifty-six states and territory for rate of infection over the entire pandemic. Now, I think these are the most important numbers, and that is the rate of vaccination. Currently, Elmwood Park is at... For first dose is at forty-eight percent. Elmwood Park, along with Alpine, Bogota, Carlstec, Cliffside Park, East Rutherford, Edgewater, Englewood, Fairview, Garfield, Hackensack, Little Ferry, Lodi, Lynnhurst, Monaki, North Arlington, Northdale Ridge, Field Park, South Hackensack, Upper Saddle River, Wellington, Westwood, and Woodridge are all at approximately forty-eight percent first dose. The remaining communities, forty-four percent are at sixty-three percent first dose, and two are above seventy-five percent. So, that's the take-home number, is that... The takeaway number is that Elmwood Park first-dose vaccination rate is currently at forty-eight percent. So, really hoping... I try to post as much stuff as I can. It's very simple to get vaccinated right now. We have three pharmacies in town, and they're usually almost all giving appointments and vaccinations, so the last thing I...
Mr. Scotty, can I just interrupt you? Are you aware that we offered to do it here, and we got not one person?
And I posted that as well. I posted it numerous...
We had a hundred and fifty doses ready to go. We were going to go to the homes of people, and no one took advantage of it. So, we're doing our due diligence to get our people vaccinated.
I agree, but I think you would agree that forty-eight percent is not good enough.
We are under control of that, too.
I understand, but we need to control what happens to ourselves and to our residents.
And offering that as a service.
Well, again, Moderna wasn't the best vaccine to offer, and it wasn't on the best day, on Election Day. So, you know, but I picked it up.
I think that's a great day. Everybody's going out, right?
Pardon?
I think that's a great day. Everybody's going out.
A matter of opinion. Anyway, I did...
Mr. Scotty, just a quick question. The forty-eight percent, does that apply to eighteen and above, or twelve and above? Like, what's the...
I can't communicate directly with Department of Health, but my thinking is that it's for all those that are eligible. I can't tell if it's twelve or above, or...
I mean, that would be good information to know.
Yeah, but it's what is being published. That's what the state has on their site. That's the official number that we're trying to get, the seventy percent. And officially, we're at between forty and fifty-five percent, along with twenty-three other towns, almost all in the south part of the county. Thank you. I hope I didn't go over my time. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Dominic. Anyone else from the public here to speak? If not, I'll close the public portion.
Okay, Mayor. The first item on the agenda is our engineer's report. Here with us this evening, we have Tom Lemannowitz from Limo Group. With that being said, Tom, we have your monthly status report, if you can review the items that have had updates since the last meeting.
Thank you very much, Dave, and everyone. Going through this thing, the first item, the townwide range improvements, that is pretty much done. It's slowed down a little bit because PSCNG was in the way at one of the intersections that's going to be addressed. I'm looking to have that bid recommendation to the council for the July 15th meeting. Get that one underway.
Now, Tom, we had sixteen or seventeen. I only see one, two, three, four, five, six, seven listed.
There's two columns there.
There's two columns?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so this is in its entirety, then?
Yes. With respect to the Rosemont Park improvements, we have plans prepared. I'm going in with the co-op vendor now and make sure we are using the best... We're following his co-op rules, because sometimes they have great rules as far as what they're allowed to use and whatnot, and then we're going to go ahead and release those to him to get started. The one item we did notice is that the wire he was proposing to use was not the wire we were proposing. We're basically following the PSCNG's model as far as what they use for their underground wiring, and the wiring that the contractor had was not up to that standard. So, we're in the middle of that, and we're now discussing some issues with the cabinets as far as how big they have to be, what we have in them, to make sure we're on the same page. We're continuing to monitor PSCNG in general. Marina Park, the trailer is finally repaired for the larger boat, that's the private park uses at the marina. We did a dry run at the marina this week, I believe it was Wednesday, so we understand what... How much room it needs to move around and where we put the parking. I'm also speaking without permitting folks, because I'm trying to... What I'm planning to do is go ahead and apply for the stream improvement permit, assuming that the existing gravel parking lot is actually impervious, which the D E P sometimes goes along with, because if that's the case, when we pave it, we're not changing it. Because in the floodway, you can't put a new impervious surface in there, creates a whole bunch of other permitting issues. So, we're trying to... The intent is to go to the D E P and say, "Look, it's already impervious," because it's been years and years and years of gravel that pounded in there, and it's essentially powdering. So, hopefully we'll do that.
Good luck with that one, Tom. Good luck with that one.
I've got a court.
Yeah?
Yes. And in fact, just to see what happened, I went on Google Earth, and of the seven decent area quotas I could get over time, five of them were puddled on that lot.
Really?
And it was all sunshine. So, that would... We have data that shows that that parking lot holds water. So, we're going to take a shot at it, because it's a lot less to deal with if you can show that.
Yeah. Is that water table or ponding? Do we river water table, or is it ponding?
No, that's water just sitting on the surface, because it can't go anywhere.
And it's higher than the river?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's a gravel lot, so it's kind of...
Yeah, yeah.
So, water just sits in big puddles on there. And like I said, when I can see if I get... The chances of five out of seven pictures taken immediately after a heavy rainstorm...
You're good. Good to go.
I think we can use that.
Okay.
The other items, with respect to the... Our DOT project that we awarded last year, but can't finish because PSCNG... I spoke to PSCNG. They've relocated their forces to MOLA, so they can get that done, and we can get our projects underway. With respect to the curb project, last month, we talked about that, and coordinating with the credits that we're going to get, because we're paving roads that PSCNG is living up. We went back and forth with PSCNG a couple times. The chart that they gave us doesn't appear to be accurate as far as what they've done so far, so I'm trying to get with them and get a hard read on what actually got done to comply credits, and we only change curbs on the roads that are going to get paved this year. If they're not going to get paved this year, that curb expense the next year, as the council and Golebeck suggest.
Okay.
I have a best port upgrade proposal for the Borough Park, Birch Drive Park, and Dale Paul Avenue Park. That proposal is getting approved. I was hoping to have it for this meeting, unfortunately, we didn't quite get there, so I will submit that next... I hope it tomorrow, and we can go over that. With respect to the head wall at the intersection of Lindwood Ave and River Ave, as well as the traffic signal at River Road and River Drive, I've talked to UG Market of Sayon County about the shared services agreement. The person who does those, which is Mr. Cabadas, is on vacation for two weeks, so when he gets back, hopefully, we can get those together and get those underway. Better Memorial Park, we did an updated cost estimate. We also had a site meeting to inform working and preventive place, and spoke to the statute people. I'm looking for a little bit of direction on the funding on that, because there's bidding requirements that, you know, the town spends so much on an item, they have a bid, and sometimes they don't, but if you got it donated. So, there's a little bit of coordination we have to do to make sure that my bid documents don't include things that doesn't clearly need to, but does include things we need to include.
Well, then, we'll have to sit and go over the items, because a lot of items are going to be donated.
Right, and I guess that's a conversation with your CFO, because he's the guy who's got to certify that we did the bidding.
We're still not sure on how much donations we receive, so I think that's a little premature. We have to just wait another week or two, maybe?
Okay, okay.
And there are... There are no more updates on my report.
Tom, in reference to the park there, Scott was supposed to verify a six-inch line.
I have not... I didn't get that back from him yet. I almost called for something else, so I'll give a call tomorrow.
Yeah, after he had left that day, I stood a while, and he did locate the two lines, and they were well out of the area we were talking about, but the six-inch line was still in question.
Okay.
So, and he needed to go and do a test himself.
Okay.
So...
Very good.
All right.
Any other questions for...
In general? No. Green Acres money is on the table, and it's due, I think, at the end of the month, the application. Mike, is there any conversation?
I talked to Ryan about it yesterday. It's all prepared, hasn't been submitted yet.
But we need a public hearing, so that's some coordination that has to happen.
Yeah, I'm coordinating with Ryan on...
We, the council, need to have a public hearing on it, so if it's not for next Thursday, it needs to be scheduled prior to July 1st, right?
And the public hearing ad in the newspaper needs to be in at least ten days prior to the public hearing.
That's...
Do we have it next week?
No.
No, there's not enough time.
It has to be in the newspaper for at least ten days prior to the public hearing, so just keep that in mind.
Any other questions for our engineer? Daniel, any further questions for the engineer?
Nope.
Thank you, Tom.
Thank you.
Mayor, may I object to the next item coming up?
We're going to go into executive.
We're actually... Yeah, we're going into a quick executive for something different, and that one can be saved.
Yeah, we're going to take... Go into executive, and we'll be back, but I need a motion first to go into executive.
So move.
All in favor?
Uh-huh.
Just give us some time, please. You'll have to leave the quarters for now. There's a... Take a couple cheers if there's not enough out there, Carl, if you don't mind.
Okay. Whereas the Open Public Meetings Act, PL 1975, Chapter 231, permits the exclusion of the public from a meeting in certain circumstances, and whereas this public body is of the opinion that such circumstances presently exist, and whereas the governing body wishes to discuss personnel, minutes will be kept, and once a matter involving the confidentiality as above no longer requires that confidentiality, then the minutes can be made public. Now, therefore, be resolved that the public be excluded from this meeting.
Mayor, which matter are we...
Wait, wait, wait.
Wait, wait, wait.
It's still recording.
All in favor?
All in.
We are officially back, ladies and gentlemen. Erin?
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, next on the agenda, we have two discussion items. The first one, as Mr. Graffia mentioned, he would like to pull and discuss an executive session for our second executive session at the end of our meeting, so if we can proceed to Item 2B. We received a request from an individual who purchased a parking permit in May 2020 for the 2021 calendar year. They are looking to be refunded for that permit purchase.
Any questions?
Oh, so, do you want me to... Okay. So, the parking permits are handled in the clerk's office. They are actually handled in, I believe, July of every year, begins the new cycle, or rather, it was May. So, this individual did purchase it already when we were in the pandemic, and it was right at the time of the beginning of our cycle. It's my personal opinion that this might open up Pandora's Box if you make a refund to one individual who had purchased it when the pandemic was going on, but it's ultimately your decision if you'd like to move forward with the refund or not.
We're taking her at her word that she didn't use the parking spot.
Correct.
That's...
May I make a comment?
Please, Sal.
I have not looked at each ordinance regarding this, so I would like to have an opportunity to look at it, to address it in the sense of what are the avenues of this kind of situation according, and what would be the potential avenue of appeal or result, whatever's happening. I would like to take a look at that potential, like, to do with this, and hold back until after you...
And see how it relates also with the pandemic.
Because you have a situation here, and this is the first time it's ever been done, and you've got to create a potential question. And I would like to make sure that any ordinance, this kind of area is covered. If it's not covered, then we've got to do something about that.
Right. And see if the pandemic has any kind of imprint on the situation.
I would rather have an opportunity.
How much is the parking permit? I believe it's about $200. I personally am not aware of an ordinance, Sal, but I could be wrong.
And if there isn't anything that you have... We have... What are your first suggestions? None at all?
I just quickly look.
Is there any problem with... I'll go for it.
Okay, moving on to resolutions. 3A, we have a request for DPW seasonal help hires.
The only thing with this is they have to be careful. They're putting people's social security numbers on, so you have to be careful with that, yeah.
And I would double-check the spelling on the cover sheet for the resolution purposes.
I have to double-check a lot of spelling for resolution purposes, so I will.
Okay.
3B is a retirement compensation for an officer that put in for their retirement. Any questions? 3C is recreation summer camp hires. Any questions? 4A, I believe, Mr. Graffia, you have asked for that to be held for executive as well?
Yes.
4B is the draft ordinance for tattooing and piercing. If okay, will be placed on the agenda for intro. Under five applications, we have an application from the American Legion for bingo and raffle throughout the year, and then also from Monaco National for a raffle.
And we talked about this last time, that I'm not using the credit for the license?
For the American Legion, yes, they were able for us and the state to use the credit, since it was not used, and that can be proven, yes. Okay, any other questions there? Under six, departmental reports, we have the planning board meeting minutes from April 14th, 2021, library board meeting minutes, April 19th, 2021, recreation advisory board minutes from April 19th, 2021, the building department monthly report for May 2021, municipal court monthly report for May 2021, and then also the Millennium Strategies monthly report through May 2021, and our monthly finance department report for our budget through May 2021. Any questions? Okay, Mayor, that's all I have on my agenda this evening.
Moving on to committee reports, Councilwoman Ballastary.
I came at you quick on that one, huh?
Yeah, I was just putting my other stuff away. Okay. Thank you, Mayor. So, Saturday, June 26th, with recreation, the Spray Park will be open to all Elmwood Park residents for free from 12:00 to 5:00 PM. Sunday, the 27th, movie under the stars, 8:00 PM at Borough Field. Bring lawn chairs and blankets, and the movie will be Tom and Jerry. The American Legion has now resumed their Tuesday night bingos that start at 7:00, so please come out and support the American Legion, and I'm looking forward to the multicultural festival this Sunday, and we hope to see all the residents there. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Ficory?
Thank you, Mayor. On Sunday, we'll have Multicultural Day from 1:00 to 5:00. I hope a lot of people will show up. Be some great food, some great games, and looking forward to it. I stopped by last weekend at the fishing derby. Thank you, Ms. Sheridan. That was very nice. I saw the trophies. I didn't win one, because I didn't fish, but great job. Progress, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Golebeck? Councilman Fasola, not here. Councilwoman Pellegrine?
Yes, please update. On June 25th, the Elmwood Park Police Department will be participating in their Chief of a Day event. The Chief of a Day program is a chance for local police departments in Bergen County to reach out to their community and make a positive influence in the life of a family. On this day, they give a child who is dealing with a life-threatening illness or chronic health conditions a day where they will have a chance to be part of something very special. Our police department wants these families to know that they are not alone in the world, and they are now part of the law enforcement family. This year's Chief of a Day will be Lucas Gorgna, age six. Want to thank Chief Eligno and the entire police department for all you do for our community. Board of Health update, their next meeting will be Monday, June 14th, at 7:00 PM. Progress, Mayor.
Thank you. Council President Wetchler?
Yes, I'd like to just remind you that this Monday, from the Elmwood Park, there's been inspections, general inspections, and there's been a ceremony for Flag Day. Please come out and break. The library has more than one, they're concerned, the library's staff, the elevator has their phone, inspection is okay. We have certified for the elevator. The lines going in for the telephone lines for buckles, inspections are going on. Perfect. I had a show with Mayor today.
Sorry. I'm sorry. You want me to repeat it, Dominic, everything?
Yes.
Okay. That's okay, I'm sorry. I should have put the mic on, I apologize. Monday at the Elks, at 6:00, is light refreshment. At 7:00 is a ceremony for Flag Day. Everyone is invited to please come out and support it. The library, everything's been going very good. They're working on buckles to get the phone lines in for the computers. Inspections, there's going to be inspection tomorrow from the fire department... Well, the fire inspection, I'm sorry. For the certificate, they're going to look at the certificate for the elevator, the phone lines are in. Kevin and Chris have been working over at the library to put the books in. We're hoping for... We're shooting for September, now we're shooting for August. And I just showed the mayor today, they had put the sign up at the library, and it says... Hold on one second. Mayor Richard A. Moller, Elmwood Park Public Library. It's going to be dedicated to Mayor. I had put that in when he had passed away the following week at the library. I put a resolution in that that library would be... Put in his name for everybody to know. He was one of the top persons for the library, that he wanted this library to be for everybody, and that it would be dedicated to him that day. Progress, Mayor.
Thank you. So true. That library deserves to be named after former Mayor Moller, for sure. I just would like to make mention that... Doris, I believe our meeting for the library on Monday is going to be in person, is that correct?
Supposed to be.
Supposed to be. Okay.
We have graduation that day.
Yeah.
I already told Kevin, told Kevin, we need to be there, because we have graduation at 6:00.
Right.
Middle school, and two days to high school.
Middle school, I'm not going to because of that.
The library?
Right.
Oh, I got to call Kevin then, I apologize.
Yeah.
Because I told him you'd be there before.
But I'm going to the...
High school.
High school. Okay.
You have to call him, ask him.
Yeah, no.
I told him already that you're not going to be there.
It's going to be handled tomorrow.
Okay, great. I'm sorry, I now called Kevin, I apologize, because I didn't do the graduation.
The second one, I had... I was torn, you know? It's only one bob, you know, and they have... Can't go in this direction or that direction, so...
Okay, I apologize, I'm not calling him tomorrow.
Okay. And also, I'd like to mention that baseball's having their annual picnic. That's between 11:30 and 3:00 PM on Saturday, and that's all I have. May I have a motion to open the floor to the public once again?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone from the public here to speak? Mr. Roberts, please come forth.[1753.52] eleven-thirty and three PM on Saturday. And that's all I have. May I have a motion to open the floor to the public once again? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone from the public here to speak? Mr. Roberts, please come forth. Got to speak into the mic, Carl.
Carl Roberts, two sixty Washington Avenue. President, uh, Council President, I mentioned about the Yelts having our service on, on Monday. The Los Angeles Dad have never been to one. I'm insulted to you guys, uh, but the Yelts are the ones that actually started Flag Day before the National Holiday. President Roosevelt was a member of the Yelts. And ever since that service, he saw that we do, he made it a national holiday. We go over every flag that this country has ever had. We go over the history of everything. So please, if you guys can make it, please come out. It actually starts at seven thirty. They changed it to seven thirty, not seven.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't get that one. See, that was crazy. Don't say it. I apologize.
But if you guys are able to come early to have some refreshments, please do. But seven thirty is our service. So please come out.
Thank you, Carl. Carl, you talked about the history of the flag. Did we have Stars and Stripes in seventeen seventy-six? Because some of those history shows, show that we didn't. It didn't come till later on.
It didn't come out until, almost, I think, I believe it was like eighteen thirty.
Really?
Yeah.
So what was-
Our first original flag was, um, the snake flag.
The saint?
The snake. It was the original flag.
The snake?
Yeah. Don't try not making a flag. It's the original.
I've caught some friend snakes, but not the country.
That was our original flag.
All right. Really? Okay. So I guess we'll get-
When you come out, you will actually clear the entire history of how every flag this country has ever had.
That's interesting. Good. Yeah. That might inspire some that weren't gonna come to come now. Seven thirty Monday evening.
Yes.
Mayor and council are invited.
Mayor and the public are invited and so is the public.
And the public. Very good. Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else from the public here to speak?
Back to the vaccination numbers. Um, the governor's goal was seventy percent of adults. So I believe that number, forty-eight percent of Elmwood Park, is the number of adults who have received first dose. And the other number that I gave you, thirteen percent of infection rate, um, that's for the entire population. If you look at just the adults in Elmwood Park, that would be sixteen percent of the entire pandemic. Another issue I wanted to mention, I would pass this again, um, at future meetings. I'm looking at this, uh, report, uh, the Elmwood Park has planned a reexamination that, uh, I guess was propagated back in December. And, uh, they have these different numbers of how much land is, is dedicated to, uh, public, public property, residence, residential, residential example. And this has long bothered me. I have a question about the number, the amount of land. We have a number metric for this as a, a number of, the amount of land that's dedicated to state highways. Does that has a significant impact on the life of, of all residents in Elmwood Park, between noise and pollution and anything like that? So I will ask again about this number because it would be very hard to be prudent myself. It's something that I feel that anytime we ask the state something, we should be putting this number, uh, out to them, uh, that, that how much of our land, how much of our lives, the quality of life is affected by, we have a plan and it is found that, that is, uh, reserved for state highways standing.
Thank you, Dominic. Anyone else here to speak? Going once, going twice? Okay. Motion to get out of public? All in favor? May I have a motion to go into executive? All in favor? Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Where is the Open Public Meetings Act PL nineteen seventy-five, chapter two thirty-one permits the exclusion of the public from a meeting in certain circumstances? And whereas the public body is of the opinion that such circumstances presently exist? And whereas the governing body wishes to discuss legal reports, litigation, and personnel, minutes will be kept and once a matter involving the confidentiality of the above no longer requires that confidentiality, then the minutes can be made public. Now therefore be resolved that the public be excluded from this meeting.